Welcome to the City of Roswell Mayor and City Council meeting of Monday, July 28, 2025. I'm Mayor Kurt Wilson. I'd like to introduce my colleagues and our council members present: Councilmember Sarah Beeson, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember and pro-Tam Lee Hills, Councilmember David Johnson, Councilmember William Mortland (welcome back, Will), and Councilmember Alan Sales. At this point, I'll now turn the meeting over to our Chief Administrator Officer and City Administrator, Mr. Randy Knighton, to explain how the meeting is run. Mr. Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and as always, good evening everyone and welcome. In accordance with Section Chapter 3.70 of the City Code, the City Council shall hold regular public meetings. The purpose of City Council meetings are for the public to participate and speak on agenda items which constitute formal decisions by the elected body. These items can be accessed via the public agenda, which is published on the website prior to the meeting. This is a public meeting and some items do require formal public hearings. An important component of City Council meetings are to hear directly from residents on items listed on the agenda. Residents are at the top of the organizational chart for the City of Roswell. Therefore, public comments and questions are essential for mayor and council to consider as they contemplate each decision. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, we ask that you complete a comment card and hand it to the city clerk at this time. If you don't have a comment card, you certainly can raise your hand and one of our team members will provide that to you. Speakers are called for each agenda item in the order the cards are received. And we ask that everyone observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meeting this evening, which should be and is reflective of this great community. With respect to the proceedings, we ask that attention is given to the person speaking. If it is necessary to have an independent conversation, we ask that you exit the rear doors to the vestibule area. In addition, we ask that you silence any electronic devices at this time. The mayor is the presiding officer and will ensure the orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion leading to decisions by the elected body. And as always, we encourage everyone in attendance in the viewing audience to visit roswell365.com for a calendar of events. There are a number of events upcoming in the City of Roswell which promote community, physical activity, and leisure, as we all make Roswell the number one family community in America. Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. At this time, I have the great privilege of asking Monty Rivers from Fellowship Bible Church to the front for the invocation and moment of silence. Welcome, Monty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
I'd like to start us out, if I could, to set the tone in a moment of silence. Well, Father, we come to you tonight giving thanks for this day. We don't take this day for granted. We don't take the fact that we're here today for granted either, Lord. I'd like to lift up the City Council, the mayor, and all the council members. We give thanks for their service. We want to grant them wisdom and discernment as they lead this agenda this evening. May their decisions be guided by your truth for all citizens here in Roswell. We pray for clarity of thought and understanding for each member of the council. May they be able to see the needs of the city and act with integrity and fairness for all. Father, we pray for unity and collaboration as the council members work together for the betterment of the City of Roswell. And, Father, I have a heart this evening just to continue praying for our city in terms of our schools, which are about to embark upon a new school year. And I want to lift up all of our teachers and all of our administrators for safety and guidance and discernment for their year as well, and for all the children that are about to re-engage in school this year. We want to lift each of them up as well as they pursue their education and for their safety. I give thanks that Fellowship Bible Church partners very well with our officers here in the City of Roswell. So I always want to lift up our officers in our fire department for the work that they do in keeping our city safe and caring for everyone here in the community. And I'd like to lift up this evening's agenda. And for all of those that would be recognized this evening, we give thanks not only for the service that they provided for our country, but for the service that they're about to provide and the opportunities that they're signing up for this evening, dear Lord. So we lift all of this up in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Monty, Monty Rivers from Fellowship Bible Church, thank you so much. That was fantastic. At this time, I would like to ask United States Marine Corps Corporal Christopher Collins to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Corporal Collins, if you'll do me a favor and please stay up there for the first item under the mayor's report, which is a proclamation for the esteemed veteran of Roswell Award. Council, please come down and join me as well.
Proclamation honoring Chris Collins as esteemed veteran of Roswell, whereas Chris Collins, a proud resident of Roswell, Georgia, answered our nation's call to service by enlisting the United States Marine Corps in August 2005, shortly after graduating high school. And whereas he completed rigorous boot camp training at Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paris Island in South Carolina, followed by infantry training at Camp Geiger in North Carolina, and was then assigned to India Company, Third Battalion, Second Marines, based at Camp Lejeune. And whereas Corporal Chris Collins courageously served on two combat deployments to Iraq in 2006 and 2007 in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, he operated in the volatile Anvar Province, fulfilling critical roles including point man, fire team leader, and squad leader. And whereas for his valor and leadership in combat, he received multiple honors, including a combat meritorious promotion to corporal awarded by Brigadier General Gerganis, the Combat Action Ribbon, the Presidential Unit Citation, and the Sea Service Deployment Ribbon. And whereas following his deployments, Corporal Collins continued his service as a combat arms instructor from Mojave Viper at the Marine Corps Air-Ground Combat Center in Twenty-Nine Palms, California, training and mentoring Marines preparing for global deployments around the world. And whereas after his honorable discharge in 2009, Chris Collins brought his unwavering dedication to public service into law enforcement, first with the Atlanta Police Department as a tactical field officer, and later with the Roswell Police Department, beginning in 2016, serving our city with integrity and commitment. And whereas Chris Collins continues to serve the Roswell community through his local business, North Fulton Pressure Washing, and through meaningful charitable contributions such as donating professional services annually to Camp Twin Lakes, a sanctuary for children with special needs. with special needs. And whereas he carries with him the weight of war, memories of fallen brothers, and the enduring pain of those returned home with invisible wounds, yet chooses to live a life marked by compassion, humility, and quiet strength, honoring their legacy in all that he does. Whereas Chris Collins is a devoted husband, a loving father to Eva and Cooper, a veteran, a protector, and a neighbor whose life of service reflects the very best of Roswell and the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Kurt M. Wilson, Mayor of the City of Roswell, Georgia, do hereby name Chris Collins, an esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to our community and to our country, and that there is no higher calling than those who have served the United States Armed Forces. Congratulations, Chris.
Okay, Chris, I promise you get the microphone.
I just wanted to say thank you for everyone, and thanks to my family for showing up. I'm a very shy, introverted person, so this is an experience for me, but thank you.
Well done. Yeah, come on up. Come on up, guys. Thank you, Collins family. All right, next on the mayor's report is the appointment of Joe Cusack to the Public Facilities Authority. Does council have any questions regarding this appointment? Yes, ma'am, Councilmember Beeson.
Not so much a question as a comment, but to reiterate the conversation from committee of why we were choosing Joe Cusack, who is our Assistant City Attorney, who's also a resident, but because of the need of having someone who is an attorney, who is a part of this group. So essentially met a lot of needs internally, and then this is also the group that essentially is comprised of us. So it's all pretty much internal anyways. So just to recap that for anyone who's like, "I thought we appointed him for something else recently." Yes, you did, but there's many reasons why, all covered in committee.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments from council? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Joe Cusack to the Public Facilities Authority? Motion made by Councilmember Christine Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember and Pro Tem Lee Hills. All those in favor of the appointment of Joe Cusack to the Public Facilities Authority, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero and unanimous, and congratulations, Joe, very much.
Congratulations, I'm sorry.
Yes, and I'm sorry. All right, next on the mayor's report is the appointment of David Woodrow to the Roswell Retirement Plans Committee. Does council have any questions regarding this appointment? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of David Woodrow to the Roswell Retirement Plans Committee? Motion by Councilmember Will Mortland, seconded by Councilmember David Johnson. All those in favor of the appointment of David Woodrow to the Roswell Retirement Plans Committee, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero and unanimous. Congratulations to Mr. Woodrow. At this time, I'll now, yes, hold your applause. At this time, I'll now ask Joe Cusack and David Woodrow to come forward to read the Oath of Office. Kara, I think, has a copy of the oath and the Bible for each of you, and I will do them separately, because I think the oaths are a little different, so I apologize. State of Georgia, sorry, raise your right hand, I'm sure, that's right, your right hand, but your left hand in the Bible. Thank you, sir. Oath of Office, State of Georgia, County of Fulton, City of Roswell. I, Joe Cusack.
I, Joe Cusack.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia.
and that I will, in all respects.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances of the City of Roswell.
ordinances of the City of Roswell.
and I will, well.
I will, well.
and truly perform the duties.
truly perform the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Public Facilities Authority.
of Public Facilities Authority.
and that I will, to the utmost of my skill.
that I will, to the utmost of my skill.
and ability.
and ability.
endeavor to promote the interest.
endeavor to promote the interest.
and property.
and property.
of said city.
of said city.
without fear.
without fear.
favor.
favor.
or affection.
or affection.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Woodrow. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Oath of Office, State of Georgia, County of Fulton, City of Roswell. I, Dave Woodrow.
I, Dave Woodrow.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia.
and that I will, in all respects.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances of the City of Roswell.
ordinances of the City of Roswell.
and I will, well.
I will, well.
and truly perform the duties.
truly perform the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Public Facilities Authority.
of Public Facilities Authority.
and that I will, to the utmost of my skill.
that I will, to the utmost of my skill.
and ability.
and ability.
endeavor to promote the interest.
endeavor to promote the interest.
and property.
and property.
of said city.
of said city.
without fear.
without fear.
favor.
favor.
or affection.
or affection.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Woodrow. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. Oath of Office, State of Georgia, County of Fulton, City of Roswell. I, Dave Woodrow.
I, Dave Woodrow.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Georgia.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia.
and that I will, in all respects.
I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances of the City of Roswell.
and ordinances of the City of Roswell.
and I will, well.
and I will, well.
and truly perform.
and truly perform.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of Roswell Retirement Plans Committee.
of Roswell Retirement Plans Committee.
and that I will, to the utmost of my skill.
and I will, to the utmost of my skill.
and ability.
and ability.
endeavor to promote.
endeavor to promote.
the interest.
the interest.
and property.
and property.
of said city.
of said city.
without fear.
without fear.
favor.
favor.
or affection.
or affection.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Woodrow. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cusack. Thank you, Mr. Woodrow, for your service to our city, both of you. Thank you for stepping up and giving yourselves. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, council. Last item, I think, on the mayor's report is upcoming events in the City of Roswell. Ask Councilmember and Pro Tem Lee Hills to share a few moments on the upcoming events.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I want to encourage you, as I always do, to visit roswell365.com. This is your one-stop shop to find out what's coming up in the city, what's hot, what's happening, and it's also a great place for you to post something, if you have something you'd like to advertise to the public. So if you're HOA, or you're a place of worship, or nonprofit, or a group that you serve in would like to advertise something to the city, to the folks that have access to this website, which is anybody and everybody that has the address, you can go create your own account on there that's free and put the date in there that the event will take place. It'll automatically expire. You can load your own image, and that information will be out there to be shared across the eyes that see that. So visit roswell365.com frequently, and hopefully we'll see you at some of the events listed there. We've got a great lineup of some events coming up real quick that you don't want to miss. Join us and celebrate the official start of "You Asked For It, You Passed It," the construction for our downtown parking deck. The groundbreaking ceremony is on Thursday, August the 7th, at 1:30 in the heat of the day, just so you're all clear, and it will be at 1054 Alpharetta Street. That's Thursday, August 7th, at 1:30 PM, 1054 Alpharetta Street. Find out more about the groundbreaking, as well as project details, at www.roswellconnections.com, roswellconnections.com/parkingdeck. I also want to tell you this is open to the public, so this is your invitation. Tell a friend, and you'll come celebrate this. The roswellconnections.com site is great if you want to go look at some of the events and projects that we've got going on. Sorry, they are events, but projects coming up, and it's a great place to just kind of peruse and see what's coming up in the City of Roswell. Music on the Hill is back on Friday, August the 8th, right here on City Hall grounds, beginning at 7:00 PM. Bring your blanket or chair, unpack your picnic, bring something to sip on that's refreshing, and unwind by listening to some of the best live music in Atlanta. Guardians of the Jukebox is a five-star nostalgic 80s powerhouse. Their shows are packed with high-energy and smash hits accompanied by a video backdrop of everything 80s. And every Saturday at 8:00 AM, the Farmers Roswell, excuse me, the Roswell Farmers and Artisans Market is the place to be, right here at City Hall. If you haven't come in, you need to do that. It's quite the hip-hop-n-ing place, all ages, all tastes, and lots of fun. It's the best in North Fulton, offering fresh produce, handmade goods, and local charm. Personal note, and I don't see him in here right now, the gentleman that brought the waters up here, his name is Carson Knighton, and he just got engaged about a week ago, and I just wanted to say that up here publicly, because I'm so excited for him. So, where are you, Carson? We're so excited for you. We'll be looking for that invitation in the mail. So refresher, if you want to see what's coming up, visit roswell365.com, and hopefully we'll see you around Roswell real soon. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
And congratulations, Carson. That is a surprise.
It's not a surprise that he's engaged.
Actually, I kind of answered.
That he kept it from you? And she said yes.
It's a surprise she said yes. All right, that ends the mayor's report. Next is the Consent Agenda. There are three items on the Consent Agenda. City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who would like to speak on the Consent Agenda?
Do not have any cards.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Before I go to council, were there any Roswell residents who didn't put a card in that would like to speak? Thanks so much. Council, any comments on the Consent Agenda or questions? All right, being that there are none, being that there are none, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Motion made by Councilmember Johnson to approve the Consent Agenda, seconded by Councilmember Alan Sales. All in favor of passing the Consent Agenda tonight, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero and unanimous, and the Consent Agenda passes. Thank you so much. All right, next is the regular agenda. Item one, City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read the first item?
Yes, this item is Comprehensive Growth Plan 2045: Appointment of Members to the Stakeholder Committee. This will be presented by Michelle Alexander, Director of Community Development.
Thank you so much, Nancy, and welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is to appoint members to your stakeholder committee for the Comprehensive Growth Plan, and the stakeholder committee is assigned to provide input to the development of the plan. Just to recall that the Comprehensive Growth Plan, we just had the kickoff for it, and it's the initiative to create an economic and development growth plan that's going to marry market analysis, economic development, and your infrastructure planning, and it also serves to update your Comprehensive Plan 2040 and prepare for a 2045 planning horizon. There will be other engagement, such as community events and fact sheets in the webpage, and we'll work to keep everybody informed as the project gets developed. And the next slide just mentions that the stakeholder committee is actually a requirement by the state, the Department of Community Affairs does require that, among other aspects of putting the plan together. And this committee will have regular meetings and provide input and feedback to the preparers of the plan. The commitment will be probably four to five times meeting throughout the process of developing the growth plan, and we look to this committee also as we prepare prior to going to any community event, to vet our materials and to get feedback on it. As a recollection, this is also just the overall process, and we're so appreciative of the volunteers and folks who serve on our committees. The folks on the next slide is that you have a list that is prepared. We're recommending to appoint the following members: Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Alan Sales, Deb Ewing, Ward Green, Denise Roche, Claire Snedecker, Jeff Jablininsky, George Crumley, Bill Wilkinson, and Jay Corona. And excuse my mispronunciations for your humor. So that's our recommendations to appoint these members.
You got Ward Green wrong. I think you messed up Ward. Just let you know, Michelle. You did great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So is that it, Michelle? Presentation of the names?
Yeah, this is recommending to action this evening to appoint this committee.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. All right, does council, actually, City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker, Courtney Rozier.
Okay. Welcome, Courtney.
My contact information's on the card. I had a few questions. One of my questions had to do with, I noticed that there wasn't, since there isn't background in regards to the members, if any of the members are part of the Planning Commission. In the, on the website, it indicates under the Planning Commission description that the planning description provides input into the Comprehensive Plan, so that if there's not a stake member on the, or, sorry, if there's not a community member or an actual member of the Planning Commission listed here, how will the Planning Commission be involved in informing the Comprehensive Plan? I also noted in the information that was posted on the website that the first stakeholder meeting is this Thursday, 7:31, with the time and place to be determined. That was this morning, so I was wondering if the time and place has been determined yet. Is the meeting public, and will it be streamed? I also wanted to know if the data will be made available to stakeholders, will also be loaded to the website, both by or before the meeting, for the general public, and will this include the data that the consultant has collected, including trends and observations? And if not, when and if will that information be made to the public? I also was interested in knowing if there was a scorecard available or a report that will be posted regarding the 2040 Comprehensive Short-Term Work Program. Let's see. Also, for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, there was a racial impact assessment that was done, and I was not given a copy of that assessment when I asked about it prior, this was several years ago, but I was told that the assessment was incorporated into the 2040 Plan, and so.
isn't background in regards to the members, if any of the members are part of the Planning Commission. In the, on the website, it indicates under the Planning Commission description that the planning description provides input into the Comprehensive Plan, so that if there's not a stake member on the, or, sorry, if there's not a community member or an actual member of the Planning Commission listed here, how will the Planning Commission be involved in informing the Comprehensive Plan? I also noted in the information that was posted on the website that the first stakeholder meeting is this Thursday, 7:31, with the time and place to be determined. That was this morning, so I was wondering if the time and place has been determined yet. Is the meeting public, and will it be streamed? I also wanted to know if the data will be made available to stakeholders, will also be loaded to the website by or before the meeting for the general public? And will this include the data that the consultant has collected, including trends and observations? And if not, when and if, will that information be made to the public? I also was interested in knowing if there was a scorecard available or a report that will be posted regarding the 2040 Comprehensive Short-Term Work Program. Let's see. Also, for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, there was a racial impact assessment that was done, and I was not given a copy of that assessment when I asked about it prior, this was several years ago. But I was told that the assessment was incorporated into the 2040 Plan, and so I was, wanted to know if the consultants have a copy of the racial impact assessment and how it's going to be incorporated or used within the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Do you want to address some of those, Michelle? At this? Welcome back, Michelle.
Sure, just to address two. One is regarding the date. Those were targets dates. We wanted to establish target dates, so the planning, excuse me, the stakeholder committee has not yet had an opportunity to let us know their best times for meeting, so we will change that immediately for that first stakeholder committee meeting that's on the webpage. I did want to mention, too, there was a request about the scorecard and reporting on what was called the Short-Term Work Program. So that's also known as the Community Work Program. So in 2040, there's a long list of, there's a list of activities we commit to, and yes, the part of this process with the 2045 update, we do have a report of accomplishments. What did we do? What did we not do? And that helps us decide what would you all like to put on for your new community work program. I hope that helps.
Michelle, thank you so much. Are there any other questions that we might need to follow up with? We'll just follow up with in writing. Back to Courtney and to the council team. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Courtney. Were there any other Roswell residents who wanted to speak on this item? Thank you so much. I'll ask if there are any comments or questions from the council. Being that there are none, is there a motion to approve these appointments? Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lee Hills. All those understand that this is to pass the appointment of members to the Stakeholder Committee for the Comprehensive Growth Plan 2045, and you see the names as listed here. It's based on the action request. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero, unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations to Christine Hall, Alan Sells, Deb Ewing, Ward Green, Denise Roche, Claire Snedeker, Jeff Lebonsky, sorry, Jeff, George Crumley, Bill Wilkinson, and Jay Corona. Second item, City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read the second item on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mayor, this is the first reading of an approval of an ordinance to adopt the Roswell Development Finance Program and Guidelines, presented by Darryl Connolly, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you so much. Chief Legal Officer and City Attorney David Davidson, would you read the ordinance, please, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to adopt the Roswell Development Finance Program in the city of Roswell, Georgia. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, pursuant to their authority, do hereby adopt the following ordinance, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and have approved this as the first reading.
Thank you, David. Welcome, Darryl. Glad to have you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the ordinance to adopt the Roswell Development Finance Program and Guidelines. As Mr. Davidson said, this is the first reading. It's an item that we discussed at committee last month. As way of background, back in 2024, in July, mayor and council adopted an economic development strategy. That included various goals and objectives to grow the economy, prioritize target locations for growth engines, and diversify the tax base. We also talked about establishing a set of tools to help catalyze new development in line with that economic development strategy. The Roswell Development Finance Program is one of those tools. It's designed to further our strategy. What the program does is it leverages a law that was set, put in place by the state. It's OCGA 366217, otherwise known as the Commercial Property Assess, Conservation, Energy, and Resiliency Act, or CPACE. What we've done is that is a broad-based law that helps to finance certain types of improvements in a broad range of property types, commercial property types. What we've done is we've taken that law, and we are focusing in on hotel development. We're using it as a strategic economic development tool to help further hotel development within the city and finance in a very difficult hotel financing environment. The program highlights, as I mentioned, this would be for new hotel development. This isn't for rehabilitation, but new product, along with any ancillary uses such as retail or office, if that's part of the overall development. The program would be subject to a minimum completed project value of $20 million, and there would be a $4 million loan minimum. The eligible improvements would be energy efficiency, water conservation, renewable energy, and resiliency improvements. This would be administered by the city through the Roswell Development Authority, the RDA. The way that the law reads at the state level, you have to work through a development authority, so we've chosen the Roswell Development Authority as that mechanism. But the city would be administering it on behalf of the Roswell Development Authority, so we would be the administrator through an intergovernmental agreement. The program uses third-party capital paid back through a special tax assessment. This is not, city capital is not government money. This is third-party lenders who would be lending on these improvements, and it would be part of the capital stack for a hotel development. Benefits of the program? This enables property owners to improve the economics of a project, enables them to finance with a lower interest rate, because this is technically a first lien in line with what property taxes would be. It's a special tax assessment, so they get a lower interest rate. It's very secure for the lender. It has longer amortization periods, up to 30 years. The loan itself could be transferred to a new property owner should the property owner sell the property to another party. The city, as the administrator, would be receiving fees on the program, and I'll go into that a little bit in the next slide. This particular program, as we're limiting it right now to hotel projects in the future, if mayor and council desires, they want to expand the program to other property types, you could do that. Right now, we're focused on hotel development. This actually enables us to test the, test a new product in the market in Georgia, focusing on products that align with our economic development strategy. The fee structure, as we've proposed, is a loan application fee, $500, that's non-refundable. Upon closing the loan, it would be 1% of the loan amount payable at closing. There would also be a legal fee, capped at $25,000, so we're calculating it at 50 basis points, or half a percent of the loan amount. Then there would be a servicing fee that would be paid annually, and that's added to the tax bill. The process for establishing the program, we've already gone to committee. We're now doing the first reading of the ordinance and the guidelines. On the 19th of August, we'll be going before the RDA to approve an intergovernmental agreement, and then we will be coming back for the second reading on the 25th. And when we come back, we'll come back with the ordinance and the guidelines, as well as an intergovernmental agreement with the IDA, essentially saying that the city is going to administer the program on behalf of the RDA. After that's approved, then we can immediately launch the program with an application and procedures for the program. As a first reading, we're requesting the approval of the ordinance to establish the program, Roswell Development Finance Program.
Darryl, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Well done. City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item?
I have no speakers for this item.
Thank you very much. Any Roswell residents who thought, heard it, wanted to speak? Thank you so much. I'll ask counsel. Yes, sir, Councilmember Alan Sells.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Thank you, Darryl, for doing this. The first is, you know, this is just another of the tools, just like the PFA. We, as a government, are trying to maximize the use of the limited, what is it, 14% of our real estate in Roswell is even susceptible to economic development. A lot of it needs to be redeveloped. This is another tool in that belt, just like the PFA. So we're putting those things in place to maximize that. But what we did with this particular one, that I'd like you to speak to, is how we limited it in size, meaning that it needs to be big enough to cover its costs, because there are costs to the city for administering this. We're basically on the collection arm for this loan. So just, we want these to be sizable projects and to cover their costs. And so would you talk just briefly about how we set the guidelines around that?
Sure. So we have a minimum loan amount of $4 million. So if you, looking at a $4 million loan, 1% of that is $40,000. So most projects, if it's a hotel project, it's going to be, it's going to be probably larger than that. So we're looking to cover our costs. We also have a structure in place, because, which would be based on the 1% of the payment that's made, so there's an ongoing collection that we have to make sure that we're compensated for, and we can pay for the overhead. But this is, this is an opportunity to really test the, test the program. So it's with a hotel, focus on hotels. If you want to expand it, modify the guidelines, we can do that in the future.
So the model makes this a self-sustaining program. To the extent that we do this, it's going to be self-sustaining, it's going to help the developers and improve our opportunity to build new commercial things in our property that we can build commercial in. So that's the goal, right?
Yes, that's the intent.
Thank you, Councilmember Sells. Any other thoughts, comments, questions from counsel? Very good. Alan, would you like to make a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance?
I would, Mayor. Thank you. I would make a motion to, for the approval of an ordinance to adopt the Roswell Development Finance Program and Guidelines. This is the first reading.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to Alan's motion? Seconded by Councilmember Worland. I know you're a longstanding champion. We'll thank all your efforts on this, on this project as well. So the motion's been offered up and seconded. All in favor of the approval of an ordinance to adopt the Roswell Development Finance Program and Guidelines in the first reading, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero and unanimous. Thank you very much. First reading passes, and as you saw, the schedule goes forth now accordingly, according to Darryl's presentation. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read the last item on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mayor, this is the second reading of a text-to-map amendment to the Unified Development Code for the Hill Street Overlay, presented by Michelle Alexander, Director of Community Development.
And I think, before we even get to reading the ordinance, I think Councilmember Sells would like to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and staff have been working very hard to make this a better project and to clarify some things that were open, so they need just a little bit more time. So I would like to make a motion that we defer this to the next mayor and council meeting.
Councilmember Sells has made a motion to defer item three to the next council meeting. Is there a second? It's seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in the council understand the motion in the second in front of you, which is a deferral of item number three. If you're in agreement with this and agree to defer it, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is six to zero, and item number three will be deferred to the next council meeting. And I thank you very much. Let's see. Last on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report. Chief Legal Officer and City Attorney David Davidson, would you please read the first item?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on my agenda is a resolution updating the city of Roswell's Tax Allocation District, TAD, number one, base value to correspond with the Fulton County Board of Assessors certified base value. Basically, in 2024, the city adopted a resolution approving the TAD, and at the time, we had to base it on the estimated tax digest value. When we went forward with it, we sent that down to the state, the Fulton County Tax Commissioners. Our amount was 681,376, 681 million, sorry, 367,230 dollars. The Fulton County came back on December 27th with an actual value of 703,262,600 dollars. That was sent down to the state. The state, however, had, went ahead and certified our previous resolution, which was the estimated value. We need to actually have the actual value for Fulton County to go forward with the collections. And so this resolution would basically ask the state to adopt the Fulton County certified number as the certified amount.
All right, so David, as the Chief Legal Officer, Bill as the CFO, any additional commentary? I know it's a little, can be, sound a little confusing, it's actually very simplistic, but it sounds very confusing. Any additional commentary, Bill, from you, sir? David, anything from you?
No. This is just kind of a fluke from a legal perspective. We did what we were supposed to do. Fulton County did what they were supposed to do. It was just kind of a timing issue and got messed up down at the state.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, David said what I was going to say. This is just a matter of a timing difference between the timing of the interim certification or the interim value provided to us and the final value as certification. So this is just rectifying the two numbers and finalizing the TAD.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, David. Okay, City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item?
There are no speakers for this item.
Thank you so much. While I have the floor, are there any Roswell residents, now that you've heard the item, who would like to address it? Thank you so much. I'll bring it back to counsel. Councilmember Sells? Yes, sir.
Might as well make it through in a while. Bill, if you don't mind, would you very briefly, this is the third thing we're voting on tonight. I'll be quick, so David can get to that beverage. But just briefly, just briefly, talk about the use of the TAD, just in a few sentences, how this is going to be used for us to drive development in the commercial zones of Roswell. Would you speak to that really briefly?
Sure. So we will devote a certain portion of incremental tax revenues to an economic development tax, from the tax allocation district. Taxes raised on the incremental values of these properties will be used to fund certain economic development activities and projects that are within the TAD district that cover mostly the desired areas that we have targeted for improvement and for opportunities that have been presented to us.
So this sets the floor at 703 million. Any taxes on that area above that during the life of the TAD would be used for redevelopment in that, in the TAD?
Within as, yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
Pleasure.
No, thank you, Alan. Thank you, Bill. All right, counsel, any thoughts, comments, or questions on this matter at hand? If not, do I have a council member that would like to make, to a motion, motion to approve this item? Councilmember Sells?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution updating the city of Roswell's Tax Allocation District, number one, base value to correspond with the Fulton County Board of Assessors certified base value.
Thank you, Alan, very much. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All on council understand the item number four in front of you. If you're in agreement of approving this motion, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the motion number four passes unanimously, six to zero. Thank you very much. Chief Legal Officer and City Attorney Davidson, please read the last item on the City Attorney's Report.
I do not have a recommendation for closure.
Thank you very much. All right, being that there are no other items, this mayor and council meeting Monday, July 28, '25, is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night. God bless.